The board will now reconvene with the remaining. They have a certification of closed meeting.
Whereas the Akimak County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the director's vote, in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.1-3771D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Akimak County School Board hereby certifies that it is best for each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully were exempted, lawfully exempted from opening any requirement by Virginia law, were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion, or which a closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second, if you can do this motion, second, certified closed session, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will now stand for the plot of the class and remember the side.
To the right, we reach the state of America, and to the republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Present.
Present.
Here.
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 Here. The goal is here.
Present.
Item 4.01, beta transportation.
Good evening.
I'm gonna steal his, um, his presentation for just a minute. We had, um, we had some complications with the beta trip, um, earlier, well, at the end of June and earlier this month, and our transportation department stepped up, they stepped in, and they, our people got our students to Florida and back safely, um, at the last minute with next to no notice. So, Mr. Reader was able to organize that, and he facilitated that whole thing, and made sure everybody had stops for bathrooms and, and stops for food, and the drivers were switched out in the right amount of times, so, um, we have a certificate for, of appreciation and recognition for him, and then he has some, um, things to say about the bus drivers.
Evening. Like I said, I do wanna recognize our bus drivers. We had quite a few right at the, um, beginning, and we pretty much, the first group had to be ready in an hour from getting the phone call to go down there. I really do appreciate them. I would like them all to stand up behind me at this time.
I'm not on the program, but I did wanna speak. I didn't think it was on. Thank you all. Thank you all very much. Thank you all for bus drivers. So, I had the privilege and opportunity to go down to Florida with Mr. Taylor and Ms. Jessica Taylor, and even though that was not my first desire, to ride down on a school bus, I have to say out loud in public in front of everyone here today, that Mr. Taylor and Ms. Taylor were the quintessential professionalists. Um, we got down there safely, we arrived back to Virginia safely. Um, the whole entire time, I'm watching these people drive this bus, and when we left Nandoa Middle School, it told us we had twelve hours to get there, but then when we got to North Carolina, we still had twelve. We still had twelve hours to get there. And then when we got to South Carolina, we had nine hours to get there. And I'm like, what is going on? Like, is the bus not moving? Is it moving in slow motion? What's happening? However, what I want to, um, direct your attention to tonight is the fact that Jessica and Mr. Taylor, they never lost their patience, we stopped knowing time, um, I truly, truly, truly enjoyed every single moment I had with the children, with the chaperones, with the parents, this is my dream team right here. We had an excellent, excellent time, and I promise you, I don't know, they're not here, but my granddaughter has talked about nothing but her trip. She didn't talk about the bus, she didn't talk about how long it took to get there, she just talked about the trip. All, it was so much food, like, I've never, just food everywhere, all the time, every day. The hotel was beautiful, the water park was beautiful, Universal Studios was beautiful, the whole entire trip was excellent. The only thing I have to say that may be negative was each state we went into, it seemed like, it got longer and longer to get there, but I wanna thank Mr. Taylor and Jessica. Thank you so much. Oh, my God. And, um, Ms. Renee is here, Ms. Renee was on bus two with Thomas Warrington, I don't see him, oh, there he is, hey TJ. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. The trip went, I don't think I could have probably asked for anything better than a charter, but we, we got what we needed, and we got there and we got back, and everyone had a great time, so, thank you board for allowing me to speak, you know, I just took the time, but, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Reader. Mr. Reader is so, he's such a nice guy. I love you guys so much, thank you.
Todd, you want to take a time to present my drivers with the certificates? Mr. Leroy Taylor.
Kathy Meadows. Walter Mason. TJ Warrington. Sandy Bowen. And really quickly, because we don't, you all don't know what this says, it says, "In recognition of your exceptional dedication, professionalism, and unwavering commitment to student safety and service, your willingness to step up and assist with the transportation of students from Virginia to Florida during a critical time reflects the highest standards of excellence and teamwork. Your actions went above and beyond expectations and made a significant impact on the success and safety of this trip. We deeply appreciate your support and service to our schools, our students, and our community. Thank you for going the extra mile. Signed, Chris Reader, Transportation Supervisor, and Dr. Jennifer Miller Superintendent." And the one I have in my hand belongs to my girl, Jessica Taylor. My other girl, Renee Townsend. These people did not get sleepy, like, every time I woke up, Jessica was driving, I'm like, aren't you tired? Oh, William Rogers. Chantel Chandler. And Mr. Robbie Cherry, woo. Ms. Rosalynn Phillips, so good to see her. And my main man, John Robinson. Thank you all again, we, we could not thank you enough for everything you did, thank you so much.
I, I just wanted to take a second to tell you that I am often, believe it or not, moved to tears, and tonight is one of those times. This whole ordeal, elephant in the ring, um, is one where there was a detrial by public opinion, um, not the first time and not the last, and those say the things to say this, Dr. Miller deserves a round of applause, I believe also. Coming into a new district, I don't remember exactly how many days she been with us, um, and I know I for one gave her what for, that's kind of her time. Right? And, um, I, in my opinion, you handle my questions, my concerns, um, with professionalism, and I just wanted to publicly say thank you, and give you your flowers on that.
One, one last thing, just everything that Kamisha said, she echoes the whole, that's the whole board feels that way, thank you all, we really appreciate it.
Now onto the presentations, item 5.01, anonymous reporting system. That is going to be a virtual presentation, and we have Mr. Nick Zima.
Hello, everyone, Nick with Scott here. I've been with Scott for about seven plus years, and helped close to a thousand school districts about the program, and that's actually the first, uh, open meeting that I've been invited to participate in, and, uh, joined listening to it so far, very positive, and, you know, the fact that you're invited to be on here to have to show everybody what this program does, um, it's just, it's just a strong indicator that if you did decide to adopt it, uh, it would run very successfully. Now, usually I start with a very small team of stakeholders, and they go and get more approval, but, uh, the more people that know about the program upfront, especially like the administrative side, the more support you have, as I said, the program can, can run overall, since back in the day, we're providing schools, brand funding, and the school community to report issues or get help and privacy, the people behind the system is the school, right, and the order, and it only goes far as how much those behind you care about the program, right, and that's a big part of the program, is, is showing access to kids, and using the information they have, as a way to build trust with your school community, and, and show them with action, not just part of the, you care about them, and you start to want to help them. So, I can't share my screen right now, if anybody can get me, if anybody can do that, it's the first thing I'd like to do, is to get everybody here, and, uh, put access to the program on your own device, if you want.
Stop sharing.
With you, and you can, uh, just, you know. So, again, our programs take years around, many, that's right, anyone in the school community can share information with their school and privacy, if they need, right, or they can get help and support in a variety of different ways, so one of those ways you can do that is a mobile app on personal devices, and I'll show you through some data, uh, on what the program has produced as well, before we go into more of a live demo, but if you'd like to, you know, since I assume you don't have a computer in front of you, and you can't click on a link, if you'd like to pull out your smartphone and hover over any of those QR images, that'll just bring you right to the stop it app, so you don't have to search for it in the app, the server will play, and I'll show you how to gain access to it, and again, you can test it during the session, anytime after, where if you sent a anonymous report, it would come to me, and I would respond to you guys if I was a school administrator. I'll just leave that on for another second, and I can go back to it anytime that you want, and I'll start with a quick overview, um, of the program. So, what the program is, right, it, it, there's several ways that anyone in the school community can gain access to the program, mobile app on personal phones, Chromebook apps are huge nowadays, especially in, in the state of Virginia, we're seeing with the smartphone bans, you really need to be providing access through school issued devices, um, it can also be accessed through, uh, school district website, right, or link, et cetera, if someone wants to report a concern, they can also call into a telephone hotline, right, where you'll have your own customized phone number. Right now, the hotline doesn't get used too much by the kids, maybe the parents will use it, if you give them access to it. So, several ways for anyone to get help or share information. There's basically a brain behind the system, which is a cloud-based incident management system, so this controls all your settings, how you wanna run your program, any anonymous reports that are shared will go here, so, you'll basically have predefined school administrators that have access to this, there can be district level access, building level, anything in between, different levels of access, et cetera, so this is really where all of your data is stored and organized, uh, we see a lot of school districts using this now as ways to begin, uh, behavioral threat assessments, suicide risk assessments, so you can start those in here and, and maintain those actions taken, and if you wanna go open case, and case management platform, if you have one with a digital or on paper. Last thing I'll mention about kinda the, the, the way the program runs as an overview is, there's a crisis center behind this thing, so we know that everything that makes this program an effective way to gain information, right, to get those eyes and ears to share, all those things create concerns for those on the receiving end of the system, right, the mobility, the accessibility, the ability to share any kind of information, to do it anonymously, so there's always a huge concern, where what if somebody shares a, uh, a incident about, like, a potential imminent criminal activity, like a potential suicide, or, um, weapons, criminal activity, et cetera, what if we as the administration are not available to, to manage that, right, and something terrible happens, there's no actions we're taking. Anytime a anonymous report is shared with the school, it's gonna go to our crisis center simultaneously, we'll make sure it's opened up and viewed within ten seconds or less, and if it is something that requires immediate attention, we will go through some kind of escalation process. That's a flexible process, everything with the program is flexible, it's really your program to run, how you configure it, how you set it up, even the rules of our crisis center, so you may want us to pick up the phone and kinda give you digits on it first, any predefined contacts at the visitor, but if they're not available, the fail safe, there's some kind of a twenty-four hour emergency contact. So, really, the bottom line with the crisis center is, we just wanna make sure that if somebody does reach out for serious help through this platform, they have the best chance of getting it, and it's regardless of your availability, right, you don't have that fear and concern about missing something, where, you know, something terrible happens and you weren't available. There's also a campaign behind the program, this is a big part of it too, right, a lot of people actually use this program, right, especially if you're investing in, right, there's many different ways for you to, you know, uh, have some way for fixed anonymous report, but I take it you're interested in what we're doing, because you actually want people to use it, right, and, and share, so you can get in front of incidents, so the campaign and the engagement behind it is a big part of it, and we do have a, uh, an engagement team here that consists you every step of the way, with social media presence, um, onsite presence, we do onsite events, a lot of different ways to promote the program, so people not only just know about it at the beginning, but they consistently know about it over time, right, so it doesn't kinda, you know, the activity doesn't kinda fade off, which we can see happens, if you don't keep that going up. So, all of those slides now, so what I'm gonna get into real quick, I know I have limited time here, this is live data that's coming from all our schools nationally, using the platform, I can drill it down to Virginia, so you can get some insight inside as well, but this is basically from seven, one twenty-four, to yesterday, so, uh, again, this is national through our platforms, providing the anonymous reporting capability. This number on the top left here is the amount of anonymous reports that have been shared nationally, right, so we know that our program is satisfying the conditions for many of those out there to share information with you, if they wouldn't have told us, right, again, that mobility, sensibility, comfort, trust, and those that are behind the system, these are all big conditions that be satisfied. So, you may wonder, like, well, how many kids will we get, right, if we adopted the program? Well, just from my analysis of the data over the years, if you launch the program well, it's really not fire, those are the information that's gonna be inundated, you can expect anywhere from about fifty to seventy, uh, inquiries per one thousand students per school year, so district year size can expect anywhere from about two hundred, between two and three hundred cases of information, uh, to get in front of that in person, again, that's the reporting directly to the school. This number here is sixty-nine thousand plus, this represents the two-way conversation that occurs, so over the years, we've been much more about creating conversations back and forth, not just reporting of incidents where it comes to you, and maybe it doesn't have enough information, et cetera, so we're creating those, those two-way chats that wouldn't happen double wise, for the administration to, to communicate directly with the student or whoever's reporting, so we see that most likely done to ask questions, maybe share information to help them, maybe share resources, et cetera. Scrolling down a little bit here, um, this is how we're seeing the program is being accessed most, so forty-two percent mobile app, uh, fifty-seven percent web, again, if we went back a few years, this would be about seventy-five percent mobile app, of these phone bands like you have in your state are spreading rapidly, so we're seeing a lot less activities happening on the mobile apps on the personal devices, and a lot more is grown on the school issued devices. Scrolling down a little bit more, these are the types of incidents that we're helping the school community, right, get in front of, what is school administration get in front of, that's being shared by the school community, so bullying is always the largest slice on the pie, we know that bullying is a catchall of a lot of different things, right, we know that someone who's bullied is about to spend their time for life to be suicidal, the vast majority of, uh, school shootings involve bullying, right, beforehand, so a lot of things we're getting in front of there. General concerns, alcohol, drugs, you know, dating's a big part of that slice, I haven't talked to one school that doesn't have a dating problem, and I have a forty, four-year-old friend just started dating, right, out of nowhere, he's doing her own time, I guess it was stressful job, but it's, it's pretty rampant that I hear in schools, and they wanna get in front of it, they even wanna know where it's occurring most, so they can deter and get in front of the form. Harassment, intimidation, threatened attack, uh, abuse, anger issues, so the kinds of things that you most likely expect, these are starting to creep up a lot, ex COVID, the mental health issues, the suicide ideation, and the cutting cell arm is in our top potential life threats nowadays. So, when we first started, I started like thirteen years ago, we were mostly just about the bullying, the cyberbullying, that's kinda what the program was all about, after the compassion fees that happened in Parkland, San Jose, we started to get a lot more information about, uh, threats of planned attack and, and the weapons, now, around COVID and after, we're starting to see that, I think, about fifty percent year over year in mental health issues. So, that leads me to this, right, the percentage of potential life-threatening incidents and, and how much our crisis center is involved with the program, so those, uh, six to five thousand plus incidents, you know, about twelve percent have been potentially life-threatening nationally, right, and these are those primary types, this was a big one this school year, much more than, uh, normal, especially at the beginning of the school year, and that brings a lot of concerns as well, about things like misuse of the system and swatting, which we did see with a lot of other platforms early in the school year, and there are things we can do to help you in those situations as well, and also deter misuse of the system and struggle going to. Violence, cutting cell arms, number three, on potential life threats, and suicide ideation and weapons, so again, this really, uh, speaks to the importance of having the program safeguarded by that crisis center like I mentioned, so this is how many actions have been taken just this school year, with all our schools using the program, so, getting pretty close to ten thousand actions, whether it's picking up the phone and calling those predefined contacts, or law enforcement, or sending emails to those organizations, uh, that's what they're doing, they can do other things for you, depending on the needs of the district once we, uh, implement the program. This is times of the day, so this is an interesting stat here, where like, what times of the day are, are incidents being shared a lot, especially because the kids don't have phones during the day, I'm not even wrong, right, but they can still report from Chromebooks and school issued devices, so we're seeing the, the majority of the incidents are being reported from eight AM to four PM, right, mostly during your school day, but this doesn't take into account weekends and holidays. Uh, and then you have these outside of working hours, four AM to twelve AM, and kinda the wee hours there, we've seen in the wee hours between twelve AM, eight, eight AM, the percentage of potential life-threatening incidents goes up a lot, right, if someone's sharing something with you at three in the morning, it's probably not, you know, an early warning sign, it's probably something more, more imminent. So, what I'm getting at here is, um, you can expect anywhere from about a third to slightly more incidents shared to come, uh, during times that you're not working, again, a big reason why we safeguard, we safeguard twenty-four seven, that's all the time, but we're most likely to do those, uh, those escalations outside of your working hours. This stat here, probably a lot of you wanna see, like, like, how are these incidents being dispositioned with your program? Are a lot of them unsubstantiated, or a lot of them false, are they valid, like, are they being useful or helpful? So, we're seeing seventy-two percent are being closed out by the school administration with some kind of a resolution or an action taken, so that means they got enough information to do something about what was being shit, right, whether it's bullying, or safety issue, or all those incidents I mentioned. Nineteen percent, this may seem high, but it does, with, you know, a anonymous reporting program, you may expect it to be even higher, so nineteen percent unsubstantiated, so they just didn't get enough information to do anything, or take any kind of an action, right, which we provide the ability to have two-way chats, et cetera, but it's at nineteen percent now. This is probably the big one you wanna see, like, misuse, false reports, this used to be like, well over ten percent about five, ten years ago, we've done a lot of things to deter that, and for fear of kids are misusing it, and just getting them to like, understand what it means to misuse the system, and, you know, for lack of a better term, like, just getting them to feel bad about misusing it, right, and what it actually does to people, so two percent has been, have been closed out, has, uh, have indeed been false. So, again, that was the ability to, uh, submit a tip to the school, right, so, this is the stop it app here, so if you download the app, you can gain access to the stop it app, or the web in any way, right, uh, those ways that I mentioned, so, you do have options where you can't search for your school on a directory, right, so if you launch the program, your school can't be searchable by anybody through this public app on a directory, like I can get into Bedford County Public Schools after, right, some other big districts that use this, or like Alamo, and, uh, uh, the Geysers, Richmond uses our program, um, Ben, uh, you know, you see Bedford here, right, uh, Caroline County, we're about twenty-two plus districts in the state right now. So, you can get in this way, or if you want more private access, if you'd rather not be on a directory like that, you can promote an access code that you need to the district or the district, right, so you would promote that code, bring that campaign, we give you posters to hang up, et cetera, and you can give them access that way, so if you put that code in, if, if you're trying the app, if you've had it, if you put that code in, drive district code, that's the unique, unique code to get into my test app, where you can just choose a building and get right in and test the program. So, again, this program is fully flexible, you can literally set the power wherever you want to, there's even different, uh, versions of the app, if you wanna focus on different ways to get help, which I can get into, but I'll just choose a building here and get it. So, a big reason for this election as well, is it can be completely customizable, down to the cohort and the building level, which you may have a totally different experience for, let's say, a fourth of mid-grade or using the system than maybe a parent, right, maybe a parent has to fill out a different form than a fourth of mid-grade or high school student, or maybe you have different resources in the app, which I'll go through very age-appropriate, so that's basically how you get in, and you can get into your organization. So, there's other, um, ways to get help up here, right, so I showed you the one way where they can anonymous their report, and that's why we're on here today, right, to learn about this button here, submit tip, where they can share information with the school, right, and I showed you all this pit data, if it's on that so far, but there's other ways to get help in here as well, right, so there's direct access to crisis text line counselors, so, the, the reality of programs enabling the school community to communicate to get help is, not everybody wants to share information with their school, right, maybe someone's in a personal crisis, or maybe they're severely depressed or lonely, um, they have this big red button here that they can hit, and it's direct access to this national text service here, so we noticed that a lot of schools are promoting this service, they're promoting this national text line phone number, and these are the types of incidents that they've helped, right, like the place I mentioned, the low-end suppression, cell phone suicide, they even got some new ones here, like climate anxiety, doing terrorism, so this is really for de-escalation, this is for someone that, you know, needs to be taken from hot to cool so they don't become a threat themselves or others, so if they do use this media, it's not going to your school, your school administration isn't getting notified or anything, but you do get data collection on how often those initiations are being made, so any interaction with the platform, you will get data collection on, you can look, you can drill down to the building level. So any interaction with the platform, you will get data collection on, you can drill down to the building level. So these, this organization is about twenty thousand volunteer counselors. Five thousand that at any given time they hand services mandatory to our reporters as well if the person is identified and involves, you know, certain types of behaviors. So we're seeing in our program nationally that twenty-four percent of all the button pushes and the activity are happening with the crisis text line. And we understand that like most of schools or school districts that launched this program, their administration would rather not be on the receiving end of these types of incidents where someone has to be de-escalated. So we want to reduce the probability of you having to deal with something like that and give them the ability to share that with a trained counselor, right, who deals with it all day, basically. Another way to get help is self-help resources. So what we've made accessible directly through our program are repositories of resources. So this is a way for the school building to kind of position themselves as a trusted advisor to their school community. Like, again, not every student wants to share information with the school. Not everybody, not every student wants to even text the crisis text. Maybe they don't want to talk to anybody, maybe they just want to control their own journey to get help. But you don't want to send them off the abyss of internet where we know the wrong answers are out there pretty easy, right? So you can control it in the repositories. It could be anything from like prevention activities, like this helping lockdown, if someone needs to de-escalate and control their breathing tempo, really helps with that. This is an example of, let's say you want to integrate with something you already do. This is a school district that has like a Google Doc form on their website where someone can schedule a time with their school counselor. Again, it would be customizable down to the building level. Then you have things like local or national hub, online and helplines that help pump in basic needs, resources are huge, like most schools put this in here, basic need by zip code. So we're getting more into prevention here and more into removing various, the learning, kind of the deeper reasons behind why someone would, you know, vote somebody else or, you know, getting into alcohol, drugs, et cetera. So I mean, finding local resources that find zip code. So again, you can put anything you want in here, we can give you a bunch of stuff to put in here. These resources can be updated anytime, so if you add something that you find is useful to your kids and community, you can add it to the repository. You can also send broadcasts out to everybody. So if you add a resource or let's say you want to solicit information, you can actually send a broadcast out. Those that have it on the Chromebooks or the mobile app on the phone will get notifications, and they can see those messages that you send to everybody. So again, you can send it to specific buildings that you want or cohorts or send it to the whole district. So these are some examples, like concerns of vaping. You may not do this, but I had a district that promoted gun safety lessons, right? That was in the state of Texas, you probably wouldn't do too much of that. There was incentive vandalism, seeking information, or missing people. So a lot of ways you can utilize the broadcasting to send information out or solicit information, even promote engagement with the program so people remember it's there and continue to use it. So that was the data national, right? So just to show you quickly, you know, if I was to run this down to just Virginia and they'd be interested, like, well, what's going on in the state of Virginia with your program? So if I go into Virginia, things change a lot. So our Virginia schools, they're getting about double the activity than national with the self-help resources. They're doing a really good job of that. We're seeing that most, some of the vast majority of all the activity in our Virginia schools is happening on the school issue devices and not on the mobile apps. Again, probably due to the phone vans, again, this is this school year. We're seeing that also their administrators are also entering incidents and manually into the system. So this is if somebody didn't use the app or for, they weren't a cop, right? They came into someone's office and talked to them, and the administration entered the information in themselves so that all their intelligence and data about their incidents is stored in the same place. Another thing that I've noticed is different about Virginia schools or increases suicide ideation is over seven-and-a-half percent that's been reported to the school. About one-and-a-half percent nationally, and then mental health issues is five percent. Again, it's a little over one percent. So for whatever reason, it may be just how they launched the program or how they promote the program, but we're seeing a lot more of those types of issues coming through in the Virginia schools that use the program. So super quick, right, I'm going to show you how to submit a tip to the school, what happens on the receiving end. So I'm going to submit a tip to my school as if I was a student, and I'll show you what happens on the receiving end real quick and take two minutes to show you how to manage it about tip. My friend Jo seems depressed and wants to hurt herself. My friend Jo. Now you're seeing this here, right? Again, these reporting forms are fully customizable down to the building level, right? This is an example of a statement. So I noticed a lot of school districts want to put statements in here that the student, whoever's reporting, has to acknowledge before they send in a tip. I noticed a lot of schools are fearful about receiving tips about, you know, someone who just took a bunch of pills, going to commit suicide, and they don't get a name, things like that. So I kind of took this idea from a larger district that put this statement here that, hey, if I'm reporting something about, you know, harm to myself, I need to provide names so it'll show that person, tell us the statement on the backend. You can add media as well, so especially with the cyberbullying, right, those types of incidents, you can share media. So I'm going to share this photo, it's going to ask me if it contains sexual content. I'm going to say no, but if I do say yes, again, that's something that you can control what happens with that content on the backend. Is it viewable by administrators or not? You want to put this on, put it on the drive, give it to law enforcement. So I'm going to submit the tip. One way we deter misuse, statements like this, we did a lot of experimentation with these. You know, one like this, we've seen cuts down in misuse a lot, but it also doesn't scare kids out of submitting anything, right? So I'm going to submit the tip now. So once a tip is submitted to the school, then we're going to automate response, and now you're going to see notifications, right? So the school administration can get notified in a variety of different ways. They can get text notifications, they're seeing one just talking to my phone. They can also get push notifications that come from a separate Stop It app called Stop Academy. This is mobile app access to the backend incident management system that the administration can activate wherever you designate to receive the incidents on the building level or district level. So I'm going to hit that push notification, right? And I do have the ability to manage it from my phone if I want. We've kind of did this mostly for the SROs, but anybody can use it. So that was the tip I just sent. So again, you send me one through the system, I'll get notified and I can manage it and show you how it works. So backend system again. Again, this is that cloud-based incident management system I showed, that you're kind of a brain. Behind the system, where your data in collection, in a store.
Mr. Zima, I think that we are losing connection.
Hey, when you present.
Mr. Zima?
Has access to this with your own email and password.
Mr. Zima?
I'm going to enter.
We have lost connection, we're losing connection with you. Is this something that you could send to us? Is this something that you can just send to us? We're losing connection.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I can send the rest to you. Are you still in my screen where it says welcome back? Okay, but you just can't hear me, I don't know where do I drop off?
You keep cutting out, it's okay though. If you can just send us your presentation, that would be awesome.
Sure, yeah, I provided that with my slides before.
Okay.
I was kind of looking through the live data and everything, sure we have all the slides and everything to review.
Okay, thank you so much, and that's it, that'll be attached. So we will review it and get back with you, if that's okay?
Yeah, for sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's this? Who's this?
Just for a summary, the Stop It app is a, we have an anonymous reporting app. That app gives students, parents, the ability to report bullying, any weapons that they know are being brought to school or maybe brought to school, instances where somebody, a student, may be hurting themselves. I've had instances come across with inappropriate relationships, things like that. So it is, it's a good app. And it, we have to have an anonymous reporting app, so it's just an option.
Thank you. Rick, ready to move on? Next up, we're going to hear from Matt Hurd about the comprehensive construction program.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
All right, I think we've got a presentation, I guess you all can see it on your device there. Anyway, I want to tell you a little bit about our consortium, if you would. Go ahead and go to the next slide there, please. So just to kind of give you a little bit of background knowledge, we are a consortium of seventy-four public school divisions. There's also a few different virtual programs that work with us, Virtual Virginia is one of them. And we were, the purpose of our consortium is to work together to improve educational outcomes. We primarily measure our success by SOL outcomes, because that's, of course, what our schools are accounted, or held accountable for. Another thing about our consortium is that we're very much by teachers, for teachers. Every year, we meet with teachers from across the state. They come in on our curriculum teams. We have a third-grade math curriculum team, we have a fifth-grade English curriculum team. So all different content areas, all different grade levels. And when they come together, they tell us what to do. And whenever we do what they tell us to do, the results end up being very good for us. And I'll tell you a little bit about what we're going to do. So first of all, we began this consortium officially on July first of two thousand and fourteen. This started at the exact opposite end of the state from where I'm standing right now. This, you might can tell from my accent, I might not be from around here. But anyway, this all started down in Region Seven. That year prior to this date, the superintendent says they met in their monthly meetings. They were really struggling with the new rigor that the new SOL test at that time had brought with. The new tests were much more rigorous, they had those onerous technology and hand styles. The standards themselves were more rigorous than the old standards were. And when we administered those new math tests in two thousand and twelve, pass rates plummeted across the state. Same thing happened in English and Science the very next year, in two thousand and thirteen. And so during the thirteen, fourteen school years, as they were discussing this, one of the other impacts that that had was that the number of schools that were fully accredited decreased across the state. And whenever your school was not fully accredited, you get visitors from Richmond who will come kick in the front door of your school, and they make you do all kinds of things that you would rather not do. So the superintendents didn't like that. Mostly small school divisions on that end of the state, they didn't feel that they had the capacity to deal with all that change in rigor by themselves. So what they decided to do was to kind of band together. They said, let's put something together, share it amongst ourselves, and that way we all don't have to re-correct the wheel nineteen times over. So the first thing that we did on that day when we began this consortium was we started with the data. We wanted to note which division had the highest score on each SOL test. And then once we determined that, we went to that division that had the highest score, and we recruited some of their most successful teachers of their most at-risk kids. And we spent the whole first year stealing all those teacher stuff. They sent in their pacing guides, they sent in their activities, their assessments. We put all that stuff online for everybody to access. And we also asked for them to put together our very first set of benchmark assessments. The following year, which would have been the fifteen, sixteen school year, we began our first year of implementation. That year, there were twenty-one divisions in the consortium, we were brand spanking new, we were yet unproven. But ten of those twenty-one divisions took the leap of faith and asked our teachers to simply follow the pacing guides and administer quarterly benchmarks. And at the end of that year, those ten divisions saw greater gains in reading, writing, math, science, and history than any other part of the state did. So we saw some pretty good progress that year. And since then, Region Seven has become the highest performing region in the state, whereas they were racing for bottom prior to that. And that's despite having the highest poverty rate in the state, the highest rate of students with disabilities, and the lowest per pupil funding in the state. So they seem to think that there's a little bit of something to go along to show how this has been successful. But again, the big part of it is relying on our teachers to make those instructional decisions because the teachers, as we are told, are the ones that actually have to get it done with the kids. And usually, when we put the people in charge, they're closest to the problem, they can come up with some of the best solutions. And that's, again, what we do with our curriculum team process. So usually during the spring semester, we'll meet with those teams online because, of course, we're spread all over the state. And then they tell us what to do, they adjust their pacing guides as they see fit. They adjust their benchmark assessments as they see fit. They tell us any other work that needs to be done over the course of the summer. We get that done for them, and then we implement their decisions the following school year. Now, as far as teacher resources, again, we have those pacing guides, and there does seem to be some magic tied up in those things, especially in math, because math was where Region Seven hit the top spot in the state first. It appears that when you shove all the toughest content up in the front of the year, that is very helpful because then you have all year long to help those kids that don't learn it initially. And if you wait until the later part of the year, you don't have as much time to teach that harder content. We've got tens of thousands of supplemental instructional resources that our teachers have put together over the years. These were created by our teachers for our teachers. They say, hey, we might need some spiral reviews, so then we hire teachers to put those together. Or we might need some more presentations, or we might need this. So again, they dictate what we do, and then we do it as they see fit. We've got all kinds of informative assessments in a variety of formats. We have things that can be administered through Google, through Microsoft, paper and pencil. We have an assessment platform that we work with, and we put a lot of that stuff in there. If teachers use that, then we don't have to grade the test. We do have those benchmark assessments for these courses, and these benchmarks are highly correlated to SOL data. And that's one of the things we do every year. We match each kid's benchmark score with their SOL score, and we run all the statistics. And every year, we have very high correlations. So that means that they're very predictive of how our kids will do on the actual SOL test. In fact, they're so predictive that in most years, we can predict on average a school's SOL pass rate within plus or minus one point based on how they did on those benchmarks throughout the year. And everything that we have is very highly learned to Virginia's standards of learning because, you know, the State Board of Education, they set the expectations, they set the standard, and it's up to us in the classrooms to make sure that we meet that, and the SOL test measures that. So, next slide, please. We also work a lot with administrators because administrators are the ones responsible to make sure that all this stuff goes well for us in our schools and in our divisions. We provide all kinds of opportunities for administrators to work with other administrators. We provide all kinds of opportunities for administrators to work with other administrators, because if you're the principal of the school, sometimes that can be a very, very lonely proposition. And if you're the superintendent, if you're the director of instruction, you know, those are lonely too. So when we allow, or when we provide opportunities for these people to get together and share concerns, usually somebody that shares a concern, there'll be somebody else that's come up with a solution for that. And we find that that really helps a whole lot. We also have, we have monthly online meetings for administrators at different levels, elementary, middle, high school, and central office. We have regional face-to-face meetings. Another thing that we do for administrators is we do a ton of data work. And I'll show you an example of that in just a minute. But data helps us do a lot of things. And we find that when divisions become more data oriented, that that is one of the things that is necessary for things to get better for our kids. But anyway, the reports that we do and the data work that we do, it really helps us to evaluate our results. You know, if we look, and one way that we do that is look at things relative to other divisions across the state. If we look at our results from one year to the next, and we see an increase, is that good or bad? Well, you would think it's good, but in some years, the whole state sees an increase. So then the question is, how much did we increase relative to everybody else? It helps us to identify issues in need of addressing. I know that sometimes you can look at your data, and you may miss some things, but then, when you look at it in a bigger perspective, you'll say, wait a minute, we've got a problem right here with this school or this grade level, this subgroup or whatever, that others may not be having, we need to fix that. And then, another thing that we do with the data is we identify the practices that yield the best results. We look at the results every year. We see the ones, the schools, the divisions, that are seeing the biggest gains, whether it's on their VAS data, or SOL data, or whatever. And when we see a trend to develop with that school or that division, we want to find out what it is that they're doing. So then we go there, we interview those folks, we get down to the nitty-gritty of how they actually got that to happen with their kids, and then we share that information out with everybody else. And we have found a lot of universal truths over the years, that when you do these things, you tend to have a lot better outcomes. And just to kind of be, to share that with you, it's, it's nothing really that has anything to do with textbooks or anything really tangible, for that matter. It's all about investing in your people rather than programs. You know, taking care of our teachers, taking care of our administrators, making sure that they're part of the solution rather than part of the problem. It's just all of that, relationships, it's expectations, and it's all that kind of thing. So those are the things that we find yield the best results over time. This is an example of the data work that we do. We download the raw data from the State Board of Education website. Every year, they typically publish that in August. And then we, this is one particular report that we look at. This is overall of how our divisions stacked up against every other division in the state. So you can see the pass rate. That aggregates all SOL scores from all grade levels, from all content area together. And then you can see our rank within the state. So for the last couple of years, we've had one hundred and thirty-one divisions in the state. Prior to 2023, we had one hundred and thirty-two divisions, Covington and Allagane joined that year. And obviously, every division is shooting for number one. We all want to be first in the state, and every division is trying very mildly to stay away from the one hundred and thirty-first round. So, you know, again, when we look at this every year, we identify, we've identified some divisions that have made some significant gains every year despite having all kinds of challenges. And those are the folks that we go to and put in front of others, saying, you know, here are the people to ask about this. Here are the people to go visit. Go spend a couple of days with them, see what it is they're doing, see what their culture's like. And if you replicate that in your school or your division, then you'll start to see those kind of results as well. Well, folks, that's what I have provided, prepared for you this evening. Do you all have any questions or comments for me?
I do, but I want to give all this a fresh opportunity. All yours. So, so first of all, I want to say thank you. I always want to ask where to email my book.
Those are empty, thank you.
Why am I about to ask that word from you? So, so my fundamental questions are probably for the people at ACPS, because you've done a great job. And it's not that they haven't, but my questions. Is this a consortium that we are all? I don't know what that "ask" is here. I don't know if we are going just for information. It's, it's just not clear to me. Are we considering, are we participating? My fundamental question is, what do the ACPS teachers and administrators say about committing here? My subsidiary question is included, if we're not already participating, if we're thinking about participating, we should have put it all out there. Are we talking about all teachers, all administrators? Are we talking about the certain schools that have greater needs? Are we talking about the certain grade levels where the greater needs are? Those are the kinds of questions that I have.
Okay, do you want me to answer them now?
I can email them to you. We have a lot of things, but, and full disclosure, I want you to know that I heard you, and I'm very interested, especially given the rankings, you know, that we're familiar with broadly. And I think it's very powerful that you brought that to us as well. I can, I can take my questions offline, because we've got so many other important things to cover. I don't mind doing that, but I want it, you're to have some feedback. Everybody here to have some feedback too. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
That's what I've been doing this whole time.
I have a website too, so if you could check that out.
Thank you for coming all this way.
Thank you all for having me. I, I did a couple of weeks ago. First time I've been over this way.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for these numbers.
Just there. See you all.
I am Fox Two Three Medical Bill and Vision Insurance for New.
Good evening. This is a two-part presentation. So the first part is Heath Thomas with Mark Three. You all met him last year. He wasn't able to be here tonight, because he is in a root, or maybe he got back to personal, but he was out in the western part of the state today. So he, you've seen his presentation, and he's going to go through that with you, and then I'll follow up with some rates and some additional information. Heath, can you hear us?
Yes, Matt, can you hear me?
Not too, not too well.
I'm sorry, can you hear me? Okay, Alex, is it helping you right now?
Yes, it's better now.
Okay, good. Excellent. And is the presentation up? I can't see the presentation on the screen.
Heath is on the cover sheet. You just tell, throw him when you want to advance.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. Again, I apologize I couldn't be there in person this evening. I really did meet you all last year, and I would have loved to have been there today. I just wasn't able to make it in person with my schedule. I think over the past year, you know, we have ventured into a new partnership with Akimak, and I think it's been a good venture. I'll talk about that today. The first slide, just to catch the people up on who we are, if we could go to the next slide, Brett. We are a independent consultant, break for Charles. I'm Edward out of North Carolina, Charlotte, I'm in Virginia, and have been working directly with the Akimak team over the past twelve months. On the next slide, you'll see just a highlight of some of our Virginia clients. And we work across the southeast. Ninety-nine percent of our business is public sector. And so we bring not only a wealth of knowledge and a variety of opportunities in Virginia, but also ideas and opportunities for outside of this state as well. Next slide, please. And not only does Mark Three get the health insurance consulting, obviously, last year, we did a bid for Akimak, which we'll talk about in just a moment, but we're also handling a lot of the customer service claims issues. I know that I personally talked to a number of employees for Akimak, helped them provide or seek some sort of claim resolution. But we really are trying to provide full-service organization to your group. And that includes non-commissioned enrollment team. We've already been planning for open enrollment for the new voluntary benefits and open enrollment for the upcoming plan year. We also manage all the communication, so we've built a business website, provide booklets and videos to the employees, and really try to be that resource to take a lot of the pressure off of the staff there at the school board. So next slide, and we'll go one more. So in 2024, when you all contracted with Mark Three, it was, it asked us to immediately put the plan to bid, which we did. We focused on the medical plan, and we were able to, not only put in place a medical benefit that saved us significant amount of money over the current vendor, but we also were able to put in some rate caps, which turned out to be very beneficial in year two. So we had four carriers that responded to the bid last year, and almost chosen out of those four carriers. And outside of this third point here, we had some minor issues in transitioning the plan, really revolving around network. And it wasn't anything that we had checkboxes on, on the front end, but it was really providers and vendors that weren't quite ready to receive the Anthem benefits, even though they were part of it, and were in that work, providers that are just aren't capable of building side of dividends. So we were able to work between the ACPS team, Anthem, and Mark Three group to work and get those resolutions resolved. And after an initial small group of those types of claims issues, the noise level has been very low. The transition, I think the best part, the employees are very happy with the transition. So the next slide. And then I apologize, the numbers here are a little bit small. But this is basically plan performance over the last six months. So when we were pulling claims data, putting up to the renewal, we're looking back, since inception, October with Anthem, and claims running through to March of this year. And you can see, on the far left, we've had a small uptick in subscriber count and member count. So subscribers are employees, and members are anyone in addition to that. We've also had, from a claim standpoint, fairly consistently decent levels, with the exception of the month of March of this year, we had a high peak. And that is going to be part of driving through renewal. And also, we'll talk on the next slide about some higher cost claims, but the, I need to focus on here, so we've got $2.4 million of claims expenditure, and about $2.8 million of premium paid in so far in these six months. Next slide, please. Okay, so, oh, sorry, go there. So on this slide, really, this is to give you all just a little bit of reference of how quickly some of these numbers can accumulate. These are all members of the plan, and these eighteen members have exceeded $25,000 of claims spent in the first six months of the, of the benefit year. And you can see we've got a couple, three claims over $100,000. And really, we just wanted to bring this to your attention of how quickly these claims can accumulate. And, you know, if we were to venture down a self-funded path, which we'll talk about in a moment, what we look at, you know, moving forward in upcoming years, and what we want to look at for a funding mechanism. The scope of these claims is going to be very valuable moving forward. So again, we've got 1.35, almost $1.4 million of claims with eighteen people in a very short window of time. So 1.4 out of that 2.4 out of this very small segment of the calculation. Next slide, please. So the loss ratio on the claims versus the premium is trending at around eighty-seven percent. Again, we've got eighteen, HCCs are high-cost claims. Those are, again, the people that have spent greater than $25,000. And the renewal calculation from Anthem started off at a 21.39% increase. We do our own separate internal calculations, and we came up with just under 21% increase was the justifying increase moving forward. But as part of our bid process and negotiations last year, we were able to put a rate cap in place with Anthem this year of 11.8%. So that provides a substantial amount of relief from a premium standpoint. We were also able to continue a $30,000 wellness fund, which I know Beth and the team at this whole board has been doing a really good job trying to maximize those funding dollars. And we also have a rate lock guarantee for dental for one more year, and vision for additional two years, should we elect to pursue those. So the next slide. Based on how the plan is running, it is our recommendation that we would accept the lower rate capital of the 11.8% with Anthem. And that would include the continuation of the dental and vision. And the intent for moving forward is, once we are through this rate cap year, then with the order approval, we would put the plan back out to bid, shop the market again, reassess what the market may hold, and see what other opportunities they provide for '27 and moving forward.
Thank you, Heath. Now, I don't know if you want to say questions for him until I do the little my part.
Okay.
Okay, Heath, I'll, we'll go onto my part, and then we'll come back. So the first slide shows you kind of a breakdown of our current enrollment, it gives you a census. I wanted to say that our numbers are slightly higher than last year. And also, at the same time, remember how we've been trying to do better for our additional tiers above single? And so we have contributed more to the plus spouse, plus children, plus fam, our family. Those numbers have, have come back to us, because we have a higher enrollment this year in those additional tiers comparatively to what we had as the single employee. And, and that was something that we did purposefully, because we knew for the higher tiers, it was often difficult for our employees to, to, to pay for those higher tiers. So that's how, when I say $750 plan, that's referring to the deductible. And I want to call it a POS, because it's a POS. If you're in Maryland, it's an HMO if you're in Virginia. So we're calling it the POS, the $750 plan. And the $2,500 plan, we've referred to in the past as the high deductible medical plan. But, so that's how they're referred to at this point. So our, our individual single enrollment's down somewhat from 75.7% to the 73. And our, the biggest change is that our spouse has gone up, and so has the children and family from the previous year. And like I said, that was something, that was a good thing, we think, for our employees. Next page, I, next page, I'm reading. So this is what we're proposing. The overall increase is 11.8%. And we did not, we were hoping, when we did the level of curve last year, to not have a 10% increase. But the fact is, is that it's cost us more for the spouse, the plus children, and the, and the family than it does the single. So that kind of change in the, in the dynamic of the enrollees costs us more. So what we are proposing is a 10% increase. I've shown you the current rates and the proposed rates, and it's a 10% increase across the board. That's what we're proposing. Next slide. This is just kind of to keep the big picture in line, in mind. Akimak County pays 85% of single subscriber, plus 50% of the differential between single and the other tiers. I think Heath spoke to you that next year, we're planning on going out for an RFP again on this, and Local Choice will be one of the plans that we look at. They have a requirement for 80% single subscriber, plus 20% of the differential between single and the other tiers. The proposed rates that I've just given to you, we range between 78% to 81% of the single subscriber, and we range between forty-one and a half to... and we range between 41.5% to 44.5% of the differential between the single and the other tiers. So we were trying to keep that in mind, too, to set ourselves up for next year, try to get closer to those levels. Obviously, we're above the level for the differential, but that was a board decision to try to do more for those groups. So out of the total increase in the Anthem proposal this year, the employees are going to absorb 24%, and the employer is picking up 76%. So we thought that that was something important to, you know, yes, it is a 10% increase, but of the overall cost of the increase in the Anthem plan, what our proposal is that Akamak County Schools pays for 76% of that total increase, and the employees will pay for 24%. So this is why we're bringing you this tonight, because we have open enrollment, which is the last week in August. We have to bid what's called Solarix Up and Running, which is an online enrolling platform for employees to use. But we will still also be offering all of the individual counselors that Mark III is going to be bringing here. So if any employee wants to meet and go over any of their benefits, not just medical, dental, vision, but, you know, their voluntary benefits as well, life insurance, there will be enrolers present at every school, and the staff will have a schedule so that they can see and schedule an appointment. So that's why we're asking for, which we typically do ask for this at this time of year. That's why we're asking for approval at this point. And I'd be glad to let Heath answer any questions or me, if you have any.
I'm curious about the, so the slide with the employees that have already spent the $25,000. So is this the reason for the increase, these employees?
Heath, did you hear that? She's talking about the slide with the top 14 claims that totaled. That is a big reason for the increase? Heath, did you hear the question from the board chair?
I didn't hear the question either, where you just responded back on the high-cost claims.
The question was, is that part of the reason for our increase? Well, luckily, we're at 11.8% cap, because it actually, the numbers call for a 21% increase. The question was, was that slide where it detailed the cost of almost $1.4 million for 18 people, was that a factor in the increase?
Certainly, that is a factor. I will say that realistically, I'm looking at them primarily as a whole. You know, so they're looking at the total amount of claims that are being spent as a whole for the group versus the amount of premium that's being brought in. But certainly, those individuals on that sheet are high drivers, and certainly would be, you know, a big part of the decision in the increase, because they're a big part of the spend.
So I think what it is, is that, yes, they're a driver, but they're still looking at total dollars. So when, I think the slide said out of 2.8 million of claims, 1.4 was this group, what they're looking at is 2.8 million claims. And they always do something that's called shock or non-shock, if they're continuing or not continuing. And I don't want to talk about people's lives like they're statistics. But that's how they look at things like that. And if these claims are continuing, then you don't get what they call a benefit from shocking the claim where they don't count it full against you. So if these are considered ongoing claims, then yes, that is part of the factor as well.
Because I recall last year, we seen quite a lot of increases. The idea was, let's not give everyone the big discount. This year, let's sort of temper it and we'll keep the same.
Exactly.
So it's quite an increase.
Which is why we ended up picking up so much of the increase, because we saved last year's, which that's about $150 a year. We put that $150 from last year, we carried it forward, so that was in the base budget. This year, we put another $150 in it. So we actually had a $450,000 additional contribution this year. If we did not have the rate cap, we would be in trouble. Because when your own consultant calculates the increase at 21%, there's no way of arguing with the provider.
Anybody else? Questions? This is a lot to take in, this only.
I'm sorry, there was a question. I couldn't hear it.
It wasn't.
There was that question?
I think we got, I think we got past it.
Okay.
A ready vote. Next on the agenda are Senate approvals.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there approval? Is there motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Madam Chair, move that we approve the minutes from the meeting of 06:17, 2025. Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
If she passes.
One abstention. Would the clerk take hold of board by district?
Yes.
Yes.
Doc, change.
Yes.
Yes.
Here, yes.
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 Next up is budget transfers.
So as you know, we typically do this every July and every August before we approve the vouchers. So there were a number of things that caused some of these transfers. If you have specific questions, in some cases, say in the operations and maintenance, we had some Akamak Primary School removal and cleanout. We had some pest control issues at Nandua High School. We had some emergency chiller repairs. And part of the projects that were awarded in fiscal year '24 were substantially completed in fiscal year '25. So that is one of the main reasons for that increase. Also, if you go to facilities, those are the architect fees for Akamak Primary and the two gyms. So those being the biggest ones, and I can go into further detail if you have questions. Food service was typically two serving lines and the retention bonus. All over, the retention bonus caused an increase in certain areas. If you remember, that was carry-forward money that ended up hitting in May, because we got the $500,000 from the state with the caveat that it had to be spent prior to June 1st. So these are all part of the reasons that go into why, well, we need budget transfers every year. There'll be another one every next one as well. Won't be as big, but there should be another one.
Are there questions for Ms. Omen about budget transfers?
So the transfer for the facility, 961, can you explain a little bit more to this?
We performed all of the Akamak Primary School cleanup and clean-out under operations for the current year. We also had the bat issue at Nandua High School. I tried to say bat, pests, but it was bats. They are pests. We had an emergency chiller at Tanger combined school. We had the failure of the water pipe at Shinkatig Elementary School. So the expenses are there, and the insurance reimbursement's under revenues. Okay, but all the expenses are there. And we had several projects awarded last year that were completed this year, including paving, which was a lot of paving, the Nandua High School gym floor, and the Shinkatig Elementary School partition wall. All of those were approved last year and completed this year. The paving was a bid. I mean, I want to think it was close to $1 million.
And then the transfer for the instruction, the 3, what, 3?
Unfilled positions is a lot of it. That's always where the additional money is. You have to take it where the money is that's not spent. And that, and technology, which does relate back to software and subscriptions for instruction as well, that's where there was money available to move.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Omen? Is there a motion on budget transfers?
Madam Chair, move that we approve the budget transfers as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second to approve the budget transfers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If she passes, the vouchers. If there are any questions for Ms. Omen about the vouchers. Is there a motion to approve the vouchers?
Madam Chair, move that we approve the vouchers as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Vouchers are approved. Personnel, we will vote on at the end of the meeting.
Madam Chair, move that we make the votes, okay? I move that we move that to the end of, toward end of our meeting.
Second.
Motion is second to move personnel to the end of the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staff presentation, athletic directors, Mr. O'Shea.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. I'm here tonight to discuss the athletic director positions at all three high schools. Earlier this year, we requested a full-time athletic director each of the high schools to be included in the 2025-2026 budget. Unfortunately, this line item did not make the cut and was removed from consideration. Though I think our students, coaches, families, and students in schools will benefit from full-time athletic directors at each of our high schools. We're past that point right now. I understand that. Moving forward, schools were told that an additional stipend was added so that another athletic director could be hired at each school, ultimately having an athletic director for male sports and athletic director for female sports, each earning $3,750 per semester. In talking to my colleagues at Shinkatig and Nandua High Schools, we're requesting that rather than hiring an additional athletic director, we'd be allowed to give the one athletic director both stipends, $7,500 each semester. We feel that this decision would be in the best interest of our students, coaches, and athletic programs. For the sake of time, I do not think it's necessary to list all the reasons why having two athletic directors is not ideal, but I'd be more than happy to entertain that conversation if you'd like to have it. That's it. Send it in there.
I would say that I, as somebody who has served as an A.D., I will say that all three of our high school principals came to me, and they are all in agreement, and I would tend to agree with them. That is a job that is very hard to split between two people for lots of reasons. The main one being scheduling. It's hard to have two chiefs trying to run one job, so.
Perhaps I'm the only one who misunderstood. I thought it was going to be 7,500 for each athletic director. Is that what you're saying?
That's for the year, what we pay by semester?
But it would, so the stipend would be 7,500 for the male and who's in charge of the boys' sports? And then the person who's in charge of the girls' sports would also get 7,500. I thought that was what we...
For the year, yes, ma'am.
So we're requesting not to have two athletic directors, because we have more than male and female sports. We also have the VHL activities that are co-ed. Again, we're just asking, instead of giving two stipends to two people, can we just give one stipend to one person and let them do the job?
But you're asking it to be combined?
Yes. So then we call it first semester, $7,500, or second semester, which is $15,000 to one individual as opposed to two people. They'll do all athletics and VHL sports, like they're currently doing, for just more compensation.
It would be...
We don't need to add an extra person to make it more convoluted. We just need to compensate the person doing the job.
But it would be $15,000 each semester?
No, it would be $15,000 for the year.
We will, we will discuss, but what was brought to us was, this is too much work for one person. So that was the solution that was offered, because the complaint was, this is too much work for one person.
It is a lot of work. It's a lot of work for an individual who is teaching and still trying to fulfill these obligations. It'd be an ideal position for a full-time person, but we're past that. So rather than have two people, which even makes it more interesting, we're just requesting allows to keep one, just compensate them appropriately.
We will, we will pick on that. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett? Would you like to talk to us about Akamak County?
Not quite the talk, so I'll overlook this a little bit. Good evening. We received a bid for Akamak Primary on June 26th. You can see there where they came in. We have a recommendation letter from Bill, the architect, to move forward with term strategic technologies. Actually, with the term of construction, that's a subsidiary of them. They were the low bid, they're all across the board as far as they were, their base bid, combined with the offense, they're low bidder. So we are at a point that we can enter into a contract. Like I told you all, with Shinkatig that night, didn't really know what to expect. These bids came in probably more favorable than we anticipated. They did go up some from the December, which we do, and when I talk to Shinkatig, that was going to happen. I think we're still in a good place. I think, probably Beth, I mean, we're still where we need to be with the funding and everything. So kind of leave it to you all to make the decision to move forward and enter into a contract on that project. Any questions?
Just to give you the totals.
Go ahead.
It's an increase over the previous bid of $534,000, so 6.1% increase. We were worried it could be up to $1 million, a 10% increase. On carry-forward, we did not allocate all of this. So we have $4.8 million unallocated. There is enough on this slide up and down.
Does anyone have any questions?
I got a question. When can we start?
I would, if we're July 15th, I would say that, if real possible, we could have groundbreaking on getting started late fall. A contract of this nature, it's going to probably go back between the division's attorney and their attorney several times, just like it did with Hardee's, until we get all that ironed out. Last time, it took about 40 days, I think, to get the contract in place. And then there were, you know, 30 days of mobilizing. So I'm going to push to get it started, because the sooner we get it started, the sooner we can get it done, and the sooner I can retire.
They're across the deck, correct? The companies are across the deck, sir.
Madam Chair?
Oh, oh, oh. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Human resources update.
Good evening, everyone. So a quick update. You can move on to the next slide of the agenda. Basically, what we're asking you is to add five EL teachers to our budget for this current school year. The slide you're seeing here shows a formula that's provided by the state that Ms. Omen and I worked on. We should have 29 according to this formula, which is part of the SOQs. We currently have 24. These five are left out of the budget. But we do have plans to fund these positions through at-risk funds, which we have available, according to Ms. Omen. Next slide. You can see, I'm not going to read all these to you for the sake of time, but EL teachers do a lot of stuff. They're screening kids, they're making plans for kids, they're meeting with parents, cooperating with teachers, so on and so forth, maintaining data systems, monitoring students who are leaving EL to make sure they're doing okay. So they do all, and so on, and so on, and so on. Next slide. This is just, again, this is what I update you with about once a month of our current openings that we have. And as you can see, we have some schools that are fully staffed, which is yay. You know, last year this time, we had a lot more openings. I felt like we retained a lot more teachers this year as opposed to past years. So I feel like we're, we still have work to do, but we're in better shape than we were this time last year. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Financial report. I wanted to start with the federal program report. And I wanted, the first thing I wanted to say was the good news, and that's the bottom line. Remember how we had been carrying $30,000 that the feds had pulled back on what was the late liquidated...
back on what was the late liquidated SRO funds? The state advanced in that, told us to reimburse for it, we reimbursed it, and the good thing is, we have received it. It's like you can reimburse, but not until you've received, you know that you have it. So that's a very proud zero there, left there, so we, we were able to get that money. The four programs, I think, and Dr. Miller's going to touch on this later, but it's federal migrant, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. Those are the ones that we've been told that the 25-year is going to be looked at. So I did want to point out that migrant, Title III and Title IV do have spend-down funds that must be spent by September 30th. So we are going to continue to ensure that those funds that must be spent by September 30th will have been spent. Every other slide, grant on there, we appear to be on target. We've had a delay on reimbursing special education and special education preschool, but that has been solved this week, it's just not reflected on the report, because I didn't want to change the report, asking perhaps already looked at. And the Perkins, I'll say this is Karen here, because she will be happy with me if I do. That has been spent, we're waiting for final invoices to come in, but it has been spent and a budget transfer must be made. So even though it looks like June 30th, all of those expenses were incurred in before June 30th, and that will be reimbursed, it will be a zero, the 42,000. Okay, the next one. This is what the budget report is going to look like moving forward, but it's going to look a little different than this, but this is just a first shot of this. At our next meeting, when we do a budget report for the next year, we're expected to have all our budget updated in E-Finance Plus, and you will see more of a line item thing. We are, and we will have salaries and fringe benefits separated, you see they're grouped on all of this. So this is the budget that was passed by this board this past May, and we're going to start tracking that with monthly reports of where we are and the percentage complete. We will probably, hopefully, even get to a point where we show encumbered salaries, because our new finance system is supposed to be able to track that as you go through the year, and as you know, we're over 80% salary, so that's the biggest part to track. So this is just setting up the budget, we're hoping to have it rolled by the first week in August and set up, and we have made parent accounts, because the state requires us to report, say, classroom instruction, like every school. We're not going to show you those hundreds of lines, but rather elementary instruction, and all the schools will roll into what we call a parent account. So this is just kind of the first phase of what will be coming on this.
Thank you.
And then there's one more. The last one just shows where we're ending the year. The adopted budget amounts are already, the, the budget transfers that you just approved are already reflected in the first column, so this will show that we are expecting to spend within 500,000 dollars of what we budgeted. We also, if you remember, the state was, the revenue was down 830,000, not counting the bonus, so you can see that we're really tight this year on spending what we actually had budgeted, and part of the reason we're as tight as we did is completion of projects in this year that were approved last year. But we really are coming the closest to the mark of spending the FY '25 allocation that we, we've been in in years. And this is also our first full year without SRO funds. That was kind of a tense year for us, because we were depending on some SRO funds, and we were kind of going the transition of absorbing some positions and seeing where it stood, but this is where it is, you'll get another one of these next month, because we will still be making some expenditures from this.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Very. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Omen? Safety committee up there?
I'm back. I'm not sure if you all received this recommendation, the safety committee, in fact, if not, if not, I will read it, so. Doesn't look like you all received it, so I'll read it. Having been on June 26, 2025, the safety committee makes a following recommendation to the Akimak County School Board. Hire two additional school security officers as supervisors, serve both on the north and the south end of the school district. Duties will include daily monitoring and building levels of school security officers. Fellers needed when a school security officer is out of work, respond to safety concerns, document incidents, and maintain records as required by school policy. Have all school security officers and school-level bag checkers trained in proper bag check procedures, trained to be through a specialized training organization specifically to baggage checkpoints. Have a bulletin go out in advance on school starting, identifying objects that are not to be brought into school or allowed into school. In addition, this bulletin should be posted at the primary school entrance. Have each school form a team of bag checkers and a backup team for daily bag checks at the entry points of the schools. All team members will be trained in proper bag checks techniques. Teams of individuals who approve the consistency, efficiency, and effectiveness of the daily entry to schools. Have joint meetings with building administrators, school security officers, school resource officers, and safety committee representation in the event a forbidden object makes it into a school. This group will need to investigate how the object got through, and what steps are necessary to eliminate this happening, and then meet with the bag checkers at the school level to review the incident and determine what steps should be taken in the future. Going back to kind of the training thing, I'm in communication right now with the Virginia Department of Education, Department of Federal Justice Service, working on train, uh, training for our school security officers and our bag checkers. They don't have a set training right now, they're in development of one, and they have told me different people we can contact. Regardless of how this goes, I'm going to continue working with somebody for training our people on checking bags, because that, that's the one thing right now, if something gets through, it's a failure down low, so we've got to be able to fix that. So we're working on that and on the training, and we'll find something, uh, I'm working with TJ's department on some other training that is available as well. I'm met with Dr. Miller and Ms. Omen this morning, we're, the annual safety grant information's out now, we're going to apply for various things on that, um, but there's going to be some additional things that I'm going to try to put into that grant application to help, that flies angry, uh, to help with the funding and some of the, some of the stuff that we're looking to do with the bag checks and everything, what will be needed. That's kind of where we're at, and we'll wait to kind of see how we move forward. Questions?
I think a lot of people, I guess, are wanting to know about clear backpacks for this year, so where do we stand with that?
It, it, it kind of just was communicated, discussed again at the, at the safety committee meeting, but there was, it was not a collective effort to move forward with it in any, any way as a recommendation of, from that committee, simply because as a group, we, we don't know if something that, and I don't know if I can say this, but we've got board members on the committee, um, and, and one of the things that was brought up was kind of the concerns of the constituents that are voting for them, and, and what they're hearing is either support or not support of clear backpacks. And as Chair of the Safety Committee, all I'm pretty much doing is, is we're discussing these things, and as a group, we couldn't come to a consensus that we felt like that was something that we had a strong recommendation for clear backpacks to be foundation, and why we would make that recommendation. And I'll just ask Mr. Deal and Ms. Johnson, if that kind of sums up what, how we got to where we were.
I, I agree, I would add not that Mr. Bennett didn't say it well, that at the meeting, there was law enforcement, the school board representatives were there, various representatives from, also central office of various directors, and it was our consensus, as we said, not to go forward at this tone. We specifically discussed that there are probes, and we talked about the turn-on investment, and as Mr. Bennett said, I'm not afraid, we have to hear, you know, the constituents and the vast, the citizens, the parents and others that are concerned, and the vast majority, not everybody, it was not favorable to move forward.
So then we, I know a lot of people were asking, maybe like if we were going to decide or not, or where we're going to go with this, so it sounds like we're just coming here, no clear backpacks, so.
Well, no, no recommendation for the, for the safety committee for clear backpacks.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I'm, I'm sure that the safety committee keeps in mind, um, you know, only, only this board knows, because we see all the discipline cases, and, and we cannot share with the public what we see in the discipline cases, but what we see alarms me, it alarms me a great deal, and I just want the safety committee to be aware to this, we need some ideas, and we need to be going forward as, um, as progressive as we can be to eliminating any, any of the, I'll just call it contraband, that comes in to, to our schools with backpacks.
That's all. I think that's very important, I want Mr. Bennett to be able to speak. I, I took the responsibility to appropriately help ensure, along with Ms. Neal, that the sa, the safety committee members have enough awareness of, of the kinds of things broadly that, that we are seeing that are actually occurring. I share the concern when we then in turn hear Mr. Bennett say to us, just as has been asked, we need some strategies to add additional SSOs, it's, it's a real thing, the request to hire two more is a, really a high priority, because we say safety is important. What has been impressed upon us, I'm just using this as one example, recommendations have come forward, the training becomes key. With regard to hiring two additional, um, SSOs, what was impressed upon us, and Mr. Neal, Mr. Bennett, keep me honest here, because I didn't write things down, I was on the move that day, but I was paying attention, and what was said is that when, um, because of the number that we have, when one school was short because somebody's sick, unexpected things happened, we're having to move people around, and so that is one example, I won't go on and on, of why it's not just a wish list. Um, if I recall as well, if I recall, you correct me, there was also, um, there is also an interest in making sure that the, same thing, I guess, that the entire county is covered. Um, if I remember right, there's an idea to, to have a north person who's leading for the SSOs and a south person. So, so that's just one example, I, I feel as though, it's not a feeling, it's a belief, because there's, there's, there's data, the recommendations, as if they have been outlined, are, are indeed intended to, to get at maintaining safety. Clear backpacks is off the table from this committee, that doesn't, for now, we never say never, right? And, and the, I believe in everything that's, that's asked for.
One of the things I guess I would like to ask is, has the safety committee reached out to all the bag checkers, or, you know, they're checking, and have we reached out to them and talked to them? Any school get their input?
To this point, none, we have not, that's why our recommendation is that the schools form teams and a backup team, because I think what our discussion was, and, and I have visited a number of schools because of some concern with the metal detectors, things like that, one of the big concerns is consistency. The, the bag check consistency, it needs to be consistent from school to school, that's why we want the schools, and our recommendation is schools form teams and have a backup team, where we can get these folks trained and know that we're getting consistency from school to school. And to what Ms. Turner, you were talking about, is you're right, we don't know everything that you all know, but the, the board members on the committee share with us, you know, the concerns of what you all find, and I think that's one reason that we really kind of was diving in on the bag check deal, a, and because I, you know, that's where we can stop it. If we can get a good program and good training, and we can stop it there, between the metal detectors and the bag checks, you know, we ought to be able to cut down. And then the other part of that is, is going with this, and if, if a knife gets into a school, Matopka Elementary gets in, we go back and we, we find out how this hap, you know, we, we go back, we look at cameras, we meet with school administrators, and we do what we do, and figure out so we can learn from this, so we can curb that in the future. I mean, our goal, everybody here, especially you all, is a zero weapons get into our schools, but it starts at the, at the front doors with the metal detectors and the bag checkers, and we've just got to have a program with consistency, a, and, you know, I see the folks that are doing it, and yeah, they're probably doing the best they could do with, with metal training they had, but I mean, you know, we've got to give them the tools they need to do this and do it properly, and I think that's the first step in, in prevention of, of things getting into school.
I would encourage our, excuse me, um, all the board members that's coming here to go into the school and work with their bag checkers, I actually had an opportunity to do that, and it's not easy, and they are doing a tremendous job, but there are some students that I know, um, know which lines are not easy to get into, and so we almost have to make sure we're clean very thoroughly, but these kids, students know which lines or how to get around things, so we have to be always proactive. I encourage one of our board members to try to go in and try, and even this year, I'm going to try to light some of the lessons too this year, um, I think we can start, experience these things, our folks are actually...
Mr. Taylor, you're helping to teach E.L., you can drive one, too. But what, what Mr. Taylor's saying, and I didn't interrupt anybody, but that's exactly what we're talking about, is training and consistency, part of that training is reading the crowd. There's a lot going on these meetings, and that's got to correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, what I would call a lot of it would be, from my old job, law enforcement sensitive, we're not going to get into it in the public, public forum here, but it gets talked about for hours these meetings, and I felt like we've had two meetings, I would say this summer, maybe the first of the two was right at the end of school, I don't quite recall, but it had been discussed in depth by all of us, central office, board, law enforcement, and I think we have a good plan in play as long as we can get it to work out. And I do like the ideas of the north supervisor and the south supervisor for consistency, making sure everybody's up to date on training, it's basically a supervisor role, keep everybody doing the same thing, keep everybody consistent, and, uh, train our administrators along with our, uh, school security officers and, and the, uh, men and women that open the mornings from, from our staff.
I'm going to be, because you're, I'm sorry. You're okay.
Okay, so just a couple things to update on, I was going to say on first superintendent comments, but I, I'm going to go ahead and jump in here. Uh, we, first thing is that we do have, um, Ms. Della is checking on a grant, there is a grant at state level that can provide SROs and SSOs, so she is checking on that right now, we're funding all those positions, so she's checking on that to possibly get us some more, um, SSOs, maybe work with Sheriff's Department on SROs, we're looking into that. Second thing is, until we get a training from the state on how to check bags, the Sheriff's Department has agreed to come in and train our bag search people, um, on August 27th from 9:00 to 9:30, they're going to train them on what to look for and how to search those bags until we can get that training from the state. So we do have training in place until that training comes down from the state. We are looking at SSOs and SROs, um, it's coming, they're going to train the SSOs from 9:30 to 10:30 on just what to look for in general, um, like you said, reading the crowd, and that type of thing, so we do have training in place until the state comes out with the official training. Thank you.
And, and I just wanted to add, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but, um, I think it fair to say that we, as a committee, we're very interested in the system, right, that could be really, really helpful, however, it makes no sense for us to bring a recommendation that we can't presently afford. And I think it's important to at least say that much, because I, I'm not trying to speak for anybody, except Lisa here, to say, which is, safety is key, right? And I know that there are people, um, who feel strongly in different ways about clear backpacks, and I'll even go so far as to say that I'm sorry for the, the advocate, to the advocates, right? We have not, just because we're not implementing that at this... We have not, just because we're not implementing that at this time does not mean that we are ignoring safety. I, I just wanted to say that much. Not at all. I think that Mr. Neal said it well in, in that we can't, you know, for obvious reasons, I hope, come in here and tell you everything that we talk about in a safety meeting. It wouldn't be good protocol. And, and so I, I just hope that y'all can, and, and I mean the people on the board too can take what we're saying here at, at, at good faith. Every time there's a meeting, Mr. Neal or I, we send out the main meeting highlights. And so you all aren't hearing any of these things for, for the first time. I do use one CCG, one CCG, we stay within our protocol, but so all I'm saying is as gently as I can that the area is not being ignored. Um, that's all.
And I respect them, Dr. Johnson. I just know a lot of people were asking about this, so at least we can let them know that this year we're not having that sort of preparation. Tim, you want to prepare for this coming school year?
It kind of referenced what Dr. Johnson was talking about. Uh, we talked about, and I think I talked to you at the last meeting, about weapon detection system. Once I got the numbers and took the numbers to the safety committee, it was in excess of a billion dollars a year. So that, it just wasn't something that our division could afford. And it wasn't something that we were going to bring back to the board and say, hey, you know, we think we need this. Because like the safety grant even that I'm working on right now, the maximum that you can be awarded is two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I mean, they need to come close to paying for something like that. So, a- and my comment to the safety committee, I'll tell you now, is that, you know, this is, this is a rapidly developing technology. A year, two years down the road, maybe there's a weapon detection system out there that's better than metal detectors and, and can get people into our schools quicker. So that's the big, big issue right now is just the log jam at the doors. A- and you know, that's why I've gone around the schools to help principals and figure out, you know, how we get the kids in quicker. And everybody's doing a great job. We just, you know, I think in doing that great job, sometimes things slip through because all of a sudden they're looking at clocks and saying, wow, we've got to get them in. A- and so we compromise. And that's what I want to get away from is compromise and get them into school and the safety part of it. Because it's, the safety part is, is just as important as getting them into school. Because if we can't keep them safe in the school, we fail at the door. So, that's all I got. Sorry, took too much time. People aren't used to me being up here that long.
Mr. Reader, you're telling us about Stop Finder?
I know. I'll try to be quick. Alright, so when I, um, came into department, I purchased, or repurchased the Route Finder, which is helping us build routes for the division and trying to eliminate, um, deadhead miles. Buses going over each other. So then when it comes in that word, we started this this summer, Stop Finder. Um, we've had a little bit of hiccups with importing from Power School correct emails and just stuff like that. We're working with the new guidance, guided secretaries that, um, that will help with updating emails in Power Schools so that it works well with Stop Finder. Um, I don't really need to go through each slide. I didn't put the whole presentation on there, but pretty much it's, um, parents can download an app, um, they'll know what bus that they ride. They will know what, um, estimated time the bus will get there. Um, and they also know they can set up like a boundary that we know like when the bus is ten minutes out from using our GPS that's currently on the bus. So all our buses have GPS, so it uses that data from SamSAR to, um, be able to tell, um, um, where, where the bus is. Um, it will also if, say, Mr. Neal driving a bus and he's, um, running late that day or whatever, we can send alerts for that. If Mr. Taylor's covering for Mr. Neal, he can, um, we can send that alert and we just go to that specific bus. We wouldn't have to do like a whole huge robo-call for every single division. Just be that one. If one school's running late because they just missed late, we can send alerts just for that. And it does come up with like a notification, like if you get a messenger or message, it will come up with that. Um, there also is in there where they can communicate with us directly from the app. Like if you want to call us or email us, they can send a message directly to us and we can see it that way.
Any questions for Mr. Reader? So what if there's, um, I know sometimes they have to do double bus rides, so.
Same thing. I can, um, I can alert to that and I can say, and I can, you can go in there and plug it in. It says a bus thirty will be covered by bus forty. You can automatically put that in there and it will change it and get an alert.
So when I download the app, I'm really tracking a bus or do I put like my child's name in?
It, um, so what happens, it can only collect information that's already in there. So it communicates with Power Schools, so whatever Power School guardian is set up through the school and the email address that's on file, it's, I send it, um, an email out to you from the, it has to be an email. I guess for confidentiality and everything. It comes from an email from Stop Finder to set up the account. You set up the account and all your children show up on the screen like that. And it's like every day it would show the time and it just shows the bus number. It's kind of small, but you can see the bus number and the, um.
So you have to have a Power School email address?
Yeah, to have an email in Power School, yes.
Have to have the correct email.
And so what is our Power School usage rate? I mean, do you have the parents?
So you don't have to have Power School. When you register your child, when you register every year, you need to make sure you have a correct email address on your registration. They get input into Power School. You don't have to have Power School. He has to have, parents have to provide the email to Power School. Correct school, correct.
Cause I know there's a lot of parents that don't.
And I.
And so the challenge is, is that sometimes people don't update their emails when they change them or their phone numbers. And so we're hoping that, you know, this will help with that as well because if you want to track your bus, we have to have your correct email. So that'll help communication from school and parents as well.
Numbers wise, I did it this summer. We think we had summer school numbers for bus, just bus riders was around five hundred and some students. I think out of that five hundred, maybe like a hundred parents, if that, I think it was like in the eighties, that actually had a correct email in Power School that was able to get the invitation.
And so when we use messenger and things like that, that goes through that email as well? So this is going to help with the mediation across the board?
Yeah, the robo calls pulls, pulls data from Power School as well.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Reader. Would you want to talk to us about the buses?
I know. As always.
We talked about these buses years ago.
Alright, so as you know currently, I mean, when I, another thing I did when I first came here is I implemented activity buses, the smaller fourteen passengers. And we do use them quite a bit for, um, golf teams, anything small. I'm trying to encourage a lot more coaches maybe to utilize them as well. And that would save on us pulling drivers off their regular runs in order to, um, cover route. Um, so I'm looking at purchasing, um, two more larger buses. Um, they would have nicer seating, um, built like a school bus. It looks like a normal big school bus except it would be white. Um, I think I can get it up to forty-nine passengers with the, it would be two double seats. Not exactly like that, but pretty close. It's, it won't be like a nice tour bus seat. It won't recline, but it will be more conform to you. And, um, a lot more legroom than a normal bus because, um, the bus that I would be purchasing is technically a eighty-eight passenger bus. So with a regular bus seat, it would be an eighty-eight passenger. It would utilize these seats that brings it down to forty-nine passenger. It's just, it's more spread out, more ram. Um, they would have luggage compartments on the outside and also I'm pretty sure we get the above head on most of the models as well. So it would have above head storage and also underneath. And this would be something that we can come up with a criteria that, so it's not used every single day on field trips or trips. We would use over so many hours, like maybe over three hours, over four hours. We would utilize these two buses.
I will say that, um, we learned a lot from the main trips, right? And so in an effort to make, um, things a little bit more comfortable for the longer trips, um, we are looking at two of these. We do have to pump in for this in the carryover because we were expecting, um, a little bit higher bids to come in on that primary. So this is how we would propose to pay for two activity buses. Um, the under storage is just like on a tour bus, so all of our props. Um, and sets, even luggage can go underneath.
And just for clarity, these buses would not be assigned to any particular school, but they would be divisionalized?
Yes.
And, and like I said.
There's a room break for, for when you contain them. So it would have to be over certain amount of hours away. Um, that's, that's the thing.
And they, I mean, they'll be equipped with everything like, um, like, like a newer vehicle. They'll have like the radars, so if they get too close to a car, it automatically slow down, stuff like that. We'll make sure backup cameras, just like on our buses now. We cannot have a bathroom on it.
That's state regulations.
State regulations. Can't have a bathroom and we can't purchase any kind of tour bus. They have to be activity buses. We have, we have, we have short ones. Oh no. I have fourteen passengers.
Twenty fourteen. They were, they were in the thing, twenty fourteen.
Essentially, these are the most comfortable buses that we can buy as a school bus.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Reader.
Good evening. I will be very brief. There's only so much I can say about milk, so. If I'm up here, then we got a problem. Um, so I'm just here to show you guys the results of this year's annual milk bids. This is the first year that we bid out to more than two vendors. We had three vendors that, um, requested bids and I have everything there in a bid valuation for you. Uh, the winning vendor is High Point Lewis Dairy, um, out of Delaware. So they were our milk vendor the last year. Um, Teddy Bear Fresh also bid. You can see the difference. Um, it's weighted heavily into white milk and then chocolate milk. Um, we use paper cartons because it's much cheaper than plastic. Um, and you can see the difference in price. Twenty, twenty-six point two cents compared to forty-five cents from Teddy Bear Fresh. And then our third vendor was Cloverland. Um, they did want to bid on the, the milk bid this year. However, these prices reflect the equipment that I require. So I have, right now our current vendor gives us milk coolers in every school location. Um, and they said they were not able to procure any sort of milk coolers. Um, so High Point will be our milk vendor for this upcoming school year. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, just our code of conduct. So if it pleases the Lord, we would like to request that we move these to the, the code of conduct and appoint him up to the office of the meeting, um, to give us time to consult with legal.
So is there a motion to, uh, table these for the next meeting?
Madam Chair, I approve that we table the code of conduct and the pool of annual to the next week.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Well, that takes us right along to the superintendent update.
Alright, a couple of things. Um, let's start with facility usage. Um, currently we have an elementary principal that was managing facility usage for the entire division in the southern end of the county. Um, which, and, and I have talked to him and it didn't really make sense for him to be running. That is not, that's a function of operations. Um, Mr. Bennett has agreed to, to go ahead and take that over. He knows the people with the janitors, the cleaning, he has the schedules for everything. He's the one that opens the doors for everything. Um, so he has agreed to take that over. Just wanted to make the Lord aware of that. There's no stack of handles with it. It's just, I'm an extra duty that he has agreed to take on.
Thank you.
Um, I, I told, the sheriff's department came to me and requested that they, if they could use, um, Arcadia High School to run some drills and that would be the week, uh, that August, um, eleventh through the fourteenth of thirteenth. Um, so, which is fine with us. We want to partner with them to make sure their schools are safe. So that what they're doing is they're running active shooters like, like they would if, if something happened, if there was an emergency, if there were students hurt. So there will be an abundance of, um, first responder vehicles there. Um, ambulances, police cars, things like that. We do have a notice that will put out to families ahead of that so that nobody gets alarmed and thinks that there's something happening at the school. Um, so we will, we'll partner with them on, well, they're going to do their thing and we're going to let them use the facilities, um, for that. We have also partnered with them to do active shooter drills on our teachers' back to school week. Um, they're going to do, we're going to combine like Arcadia and, and Arcadia High School. Um, and then we're going to go to High School. The two elementaries are going to be going together. So, um, we do have a plan in place that teachers can opt out if, if they feel it would be too traumatic for them. Um, we don't want to traumatize anybody, but we do want to make sure that we are prepared in case an emergency happens. Um, so basically they're going to come in and we're going to run through what, what it would look like if, if something were to happen at our schools, what, what our response be. Um, at the same time, they're going to review the bomb threat procedures because we have had those. And we had a couple of those last year. So we want to make sure that everybody knows what to do in case of another bomb threat. Um, did want to talk about the grants that are on hold. We posted a memo about that. It came down from the state this last week. Um, I, I kind of formatted the memo in the format that I got from the state about the grants. Here's a list of grants. Here's what we're doing. Um, those, we have already kind of compensated for that funding. So if for some reason the state does not approve that funding, we will, nobody will lose their job. Nobody is losing their job if this funding doesn't come through for us. Um, we won't lose any programming if that funding does not come through. Now, what it could look like is that, uh, a lot of the funding has to do with our EL program. So we may, instead of running a separate program to EL in the summer, we may combine them with our, um, summer school program, which is immersive and, and research has proven that that has good results. So we won't lose any programming. We won't lose any positions. Um, we're going to be just fine. If it does come through, then we'll have, you know, the extra dollars to, to keep up those programs and provide more resources, but we will be fine if it does not happen. Um, the other thing is that Dr. Johnson and Mr. Neal and the sheriff and myself are attending a safety forum on July twenty-ninth in Richmond. And so we will be able to, no Hampton. And so we will be able to bring back, um, some information from that and most updated information from the state.
Thank you. Just one other question here?
Um, I'd just like to be sure. Very encouraged to hear that we believe indeed that we can compensate between programs continually. And I'd be wrong if I didn't say and, and we anticipate not this in the future. GED, any, any stu-, um, are we pretty confident that we would still be able to offer GED for our school? Just wanted to be sure.
Okay. Action items. Medical dental vision insurance renewal.
Madam Chair, I approve that we approve the medical, uh, medical dental and vision insurance renewal as presented.
Sir? There's a motion in second to go forward with the insurance renewal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The updated signature authorization. Is there a motion on the updated signatures?
Madam Chair, I approve that we approve the updated signature authorization for, uh, that only Mr. Joel P. P.
Uh, any, is there a second? Motion is second to change the, uh, signature authorization. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Regulation updates.
Madam Chair, I approve that we approve the secondary regulation updates, uh, policy D, C, D, D. Sir?
Madam Chair, you second to go forward with the regulation updates. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Regulation exhibit updates.
Madam Chair, I approve that we approve the regulation exhibit updates, J N, J N E. Go ahead.
There's a motion in second to approve the regulation exhibit updates. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I, I was so quickly just say that those have to do with fees.
Yes, sure. Dan, thank you. Uh, if we all work on that, I know Ms. Taylor was one of the people on that was, it was alerting. it was a learning experience for everyone, but we're, we're all squared away with our policy cap. Uh, implement weather. There would have a chance to look at that. There will now be, there will be long delays for the central office staff, that's a big change.
Um, mostly for the teachers, the, a lot of times, um, when we're on a two-hour delay, we can, we can still come in and work unless it's a safety issue.
Twelve hundred employees, the teachers came in, they already observed the two-hour delay.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes. No, they do.
Well, it'll be on yours now.
Madam Chair.
Apparently, it's not uniform at every school, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, uh, I move that we approve the implement weather. Code is bad, presented.
Sir.
Motion is second to go forward with the implement weather policy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Tuition reimbursement. Barbara Lee talked to us last time about this, she wants our local staff to be highly, highly qualified and licensed to teach what they're supposed to be doing, so we've increased the amount of tuition assistance.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the tuition reimbursement, um, as presented.
Sir.
Motion is second to move forward with the tuition reimbursement, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The AcuMac primary renovation bid.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the AcuMac primary renovation rate bid, that goes to Turner Strategic Tech.
Motion is second to go forward with the recommended, um, bid of Turner Strategic Tech, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The milk bids, is there a motion on the milk bids?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the milk bid, move to High Point, as presented.
Sir.
Motion is second on the milk bid, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Department of Health, MOU.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Virginia Department of Health, MOU, as presented.
Motion is second to go forward with the Virginia Health, MOU, the Health Department, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the, the two activity buses that was handy, I thought that we already had.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the activity buses.
For real.
This time for real, as presented.
Sir.
Motion is second, uh, to get the two activity buses, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Johnson, do you have any comments for us?
No.
And Ms. Bogdan?
Only to thank you guys again, I forgot Michelle Blossom earlier, she was the, the room at the Beta Convention, all the food. I tell you, she had all the food.
She was popular.
She had anything you could think of to eat, she had in her room, so I know it wasn't, like, constantly turning the door, but, um, thank you so much for everything, to the lady sitting there, um, thank you all for a great time. Oh, and let me just say this one last thing, because we now know where the Beta Convention is next year, we want to start planning, like, in September.
It's been a long time, I'm glad you're here.
I just want to say that, uh, thank you for all the bus drivers that stepped up. Um, saw a lot of pictures on social media of kids on buses, and they looked like they were not jammed in there, and it was, uh, turned out, so I just wanted to thank Dr. Miller for jumping in quickly as she did, and also all the bus drivers, and Mr. Reed did, did, did an American state, I say that, thank you.
Uh, I'd like to say the same thing also, I thank the volunteers for going and watching us. So, thank y'all, and hope that next year we have, we'll have a better experience.
Mr. Neal?
I just, like everybody else, I want to thank the drivers, a lot of those guys dropped everything and went to the last minute notice for the Beta Convention, make everything work. And just to say to Ms. Blossom, if she needs a volunteer for food next year, I'll be more happy to help. I got, I got, I need to stand up anyway. I'll put a recorder here.
Mr. Taylor, would you like to read the rules, how you comment?
One, identify yourself by name and number one address. Two, speakers are limited to three minutes. Three, individuals may reserve or transfer their time to another speaker. Four, specific personnel members must not be initiated at a public meeting. Five, speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or abuse of property. Six, specify the nature of your remarks. Seven, speakers who have previously spoken on a subject or public comment should not be allowed to readdress the board during the same public comment period. Eight, specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent for the appropriate staff member. Nine, anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation for public comment has to present their presentation twenty-four hours in advance for, for review by the staff or appropriateness. Ten, all questions shall be directed to the chairperson who at her discretion solicits a response from the appropriate staff member.
Ms. Sarah Schottlau. Okay. Courtney Hamer.
Can I pass you off some photos?
Good. Thank you.
My name is Courtney Hammer, I live at one eight three four two Wilson Avenue in Marksling. Um, I'd like to first start by thanking Dr. Miller, who took all of our disgruntled calls and handled them with grace and patience, and also to our bus drivers, who quite literally worked around the clock to make this trip possible. Your mission is to provide a safe, engaging student-centered environment where all learners are challenged, encouraged, and supported to maximize growth and be prepared for further education, citizenship, and work. A quote, "Due to unforeseen circumstances beyond our control, the charter bus company originally contracted for these trips is no longer available to fulfill our reservation. Not only does this lack honesty but transparency, as many companies were brought to forward at the May sixth meeting to vote on transportation. What's most troubling is the complete lack of vetting by the ACPS Transportation Director when it came to securing Johnson buses. That kind of oversight just isn't disappointing, but it's unacceptable." A quote, "While the solution is not ideal, it's the safest and most immediate option available to ensure these trips proceed as planned. This also proved untrue as we were able to not only secure available last-minute transportation contracts for our Betas via the venture buses, but it was the original Plan B contingent on the event that Johnson Bus Company not provide proper insurance documents for the May sixth board meeting." A quote, "To help ease the experience, ACPS will be sending two air-conditioned school buses for each Beta trip, and this will allow for more space for students and chaperones to stretch out, rest, and sleep more comfortably. A dedicated storage space for props, costumes, and competition materials so students can travel safely without overcrowding, and scheduled rest stops along the route. Not only did two buses prove not to be enough room for the entire club, our luggage and props, but some children were sitting two per seat for nearly eighteen-plus hours, and the adults, the wonderful and supportive Miss, Miss Handy being one of them, had little to no blank room as our luggage was stacked at our feet and in seats, leaving some children to stretch out on the floors behind bus seats in attempt to sleep for our next stop. Nando Middle School Club is huge, mainly credited to our club sponsor Joy Phillips, who is not only a champion for these students to join in sixth grade, but passionately plans every single minute detail along the way. From our skits, our group performances, stacked snack rooms, detailed chaperone schedules, and thoughtful and affordable payment plans for the parents. With a hundred and thirty-five honor roll students, total on our club, fifty-two of them attended Nationals, that's fifty-two bodies, fifty-two suitcases on two buses, plus props and our four drivers. Our props were tested and parents offered personally to drive fifteen-plus hours down with the help to burden our props and projects and luggage for their space on our bus. We as a club remain incredibly grateful to the drivers for goodness their last minute, but school buses just aren't outfitted for long-distance travel. The photo is distributed to you, or just another example of how the state quarters were not accurate in their assumptions that ACPS school buses were the best transportation for this trip. The unwillingness for some of the members to even consider venture buses as an alternate, yet agreeing that we could raise the money ourselves and charter our own in just three days, and the lack of public recognition for these honored students also feels unenthusiastic and insensitive of the hard work this club, the sponsors, and parents put forth in and out of school to get this far, both academically and financially. The lack of transparency surrounding how an adventure bus company was even hired in the first place is concerning. This can't be the same due diligence and the same governing board who just months ago called an emergency meeting when it served them, but wouldn't be bothered to call an emergency meeting, cast electronic vote, ring a bell, or newly-appointed superintendent to help get these kids better transportation. Hearing that just six days before our departure, members of our own board felt it was adequate to send only two buses, when our principal specifically asked for three feels incredibly dismissive and eye-opening when her mission claims that you challenge and engage and support these students, but all you did was sit at the table and play a numbers game. You failed them and you made it seem like it was out of your control, but it wasn't, you simply chose not to. Beta is a club that is achieved based on achievement, character, service, and leadership, pages that every one of us could take a page from. I invite the board to have the courage and honesty to ask yourself why you're sitting at this table. How are you serving these students, and what are you doing to make their experience better? Because what I see is smoke and mirrors, very little accountability in a board that's crumbling with division and egos that are too big for even the roomiest, most comfortable of school buses. Please just know that we see you, and while this seems silly and it may seem dramatic, or while many of you may not have skin in the game, we do, these are our children, and we see who goes to bat for them. So in closing, I invite each of you to pack a bag, pick a buddy, and stuff your seats with your luggage, and let's take a ride on any bus of your choosing and see how long you can last. Twenty hours to Nashville next year? These drivers deserve more than just a printed plaque with their name and script, they deserve generous bonuses from the thousands of dollars ACPS has set in around Unleashed County funds. Thank you.
Deborah Olson?
I yield my time to Dr. Fetterman.
Good evening, I am Dr. James J. Fetterman, thirty-two, two fifty-five, Pillar Pond Road, Manor, Virginia. A lifelong resident of Easton Shore, taxpayer, business owner, local, state, national leader, and employee of AcuMac County Public Schools. Remember the same letters used in the word silent, or the same letters used in listen. Hear me out. I was contacted to help with the Collaborative Retirement Banquet held on May the twenty-ninth between AcuMac County Public Schools and ADEA. I was asked to coordinate the soloists, order the plaques, presidential award, and to suggest someone to give the invocation on the night of the event. This was a normal expectation, because I have done this routine for over twenty years. Not to mention, I spoke every year of my BEA presidential term at the retirement banquet while I was on education leave from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-four. Again, I was called or emailed and asked to participate, I did not volunteer. Doing this work does not require a position or a title to have the work and legacy of those who have dedicated their professional career to the students and families of AcuMac County to be honored. This year was no different until Madam Chair of this dysfunctional board got involved. Madam Chair and those who recklessly follow her could not and would not allow retaliation against any employee. My question is, why is this happening to only black people? Why? I explained from day one, I am not that person. Since you like to play games, tag your it. You see, things in your head should not make its way to the front, but it did. Madam Chair, members of the board, when you see smoke, there is fire somewhere. I am unequivocally unafraid, unmovable against racism and political nonsense. District six, you know how to sort trash and build an amazing treasure. District four, you know the value of what good tools can do to make a job more efficient. District two, when one of your, like, one of your five senses is limited, God will give you more of another to compensate. District six, how can you sing Southern gospel and not denounce racism and hatred? The board in your collective capacity, if you care about your own integrity, I suggest you make some radical decisions about how you publicly support anything spoken, written, or shared by Madam Chair. In closing, the division, you're costing the division a fortune because of your politics and incompetence. I present to each of you a copy of the email that the current board chair sent in response to an email from the superintendent's office that I obtained through FOIA. Not only is your email troubling, but you put it in writing. But you have knowingly violated the law again. Again, Judge Farishaya made it clear to you that not knowing is negligent. Madam Chair, members of the board and community, Virginia Code forty-point-one dash twenty-seven-point-three establishes protections against retaliation for employees in Virginia who report violations or federal law. Here's the email, and I have printed copies for anybody that would like this. Superintendent Secretary sent this to the board chair saying, "I thought you might want to see the program for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty, for the twenty-five retirement banquet for Wednesday, May the twenty-fifth, prior to the, the event." Then, the board chair sends a message saying, "Lois, uh, Robbie Cherix is the ADEA representative, shouldn't he be handing out the awards? Fetterman has nothing to do with BEA or ADEA." Lois responds, "I emailed Robbie to find out if he was attending the banquet, and he finally emailed me back and said that he was not attending, he said he gets too nervous being in front of people, and that he asked James to fill in for him." Again, I was called, I did not volunteer. Michelle also helped, and James will be handing out the gifts to the retirees. James ordered all the plaques and special presentations for the two retirees who have over forty years of service. He arranged for the singer and the special music for the student that sang at the banquet. He never, we never asked James to be a speaker, he is only presenting gifts. And Madam Board Chair responds, "It is not appropriate for him to be participating." Are you aware, he sued the board. Madam Chair, that is retaliation, and it is against the law. And seemingly because you and a few of your opted to not sit through the entire last trial, perhaps it is true that the third time around will be a charm, so we'll see you soon, thank you.
Janet Delmon.
I defer my time to Jamie Johnson. Apologize, I'm holding a paper towel, cut my finger in the bathroom. Um, Jamie Johnson, twenty-two North Street of Annealecock. Um, I want to start by thanking the school bus drivers who stepped up to make sure our kids were able to go to the national convention after the necessary due diligence was not performed to ensure that the travel plans they were promised would come to fruition. Uh, now I'm going to acknowledge the achievements of the Nandua Middle School Beta Club. They competed in sixty-two different categories this school year, ranging from core academic subjects to the arts, to demonstrations of leadership skills and life performances. They have run for and held the state president position for the last four years. They have run for our national office positions every year as well for the last four years. They had three students be chosen to be premier performers, which is an opening night performance put on by the top five singers and dancers in each state, represented by eighteen states at Nationals. They placed in the top ten in four competitions at their annual leadership summit this year. They placed in the top ten in fourteen categories at state convention this year, and they placed in four separate categories at their national convention. To fully comprehend how significant this is, you would have to attend a national convention to see firsthand just how large it is. For instance, our engineering team placed in the top ten out of a hundred teams. They competed against STEM magnet schools, wealthy private schools, large school systems with tons of resources, and were the only Virginia school system to place. And finally, the thing I'm most proud of is that they completed one thousand four hundred and thirty-two service hours this school year and are learning the significance and impact that their time and energy has in our community. In addition to all of their achievements, they have also worked hard all school year on the multitude of fundraising endeavors to help cover the high costs of a trip like this. One of the biggest life lessons I'm attempting to instill in my children is that hard work pays off. When we devalue the time, energy, and effort that they have put in by writing off all of our travel concerns as issues of comfort, that tells them that they don't matter, that the goals they've been working towards are insignificant, that arriving to a national competition, safe and well-rested, is not a priority. Some of our students had an event to go to the very first evening they arrived after getting little sleep all night, and they owned eighteen-plus hour school bus drive. Three school buses were requested, and only two were provided. Three school buses were requested and only two were provided, which created an unsafe and uncomfortable environment for those riding the bus, as there was not enough room for all the luggage, supplies, props, sets, and competition gear, even after twelve people ended up not traveling with the group due to the change in transportation, still requiring several students to double up for the ride in their bus seats. All the competition gear was designed and packed to fit in the undercarriage storage on the coach buses and had to be reworked at the last minute, still taking up eight bus seats with several parents still having to drive and take sets, props, and equipment in their own vehicles. Separating competition gear into multiple personal vehicles caused extra work on the parents' part as well as anxiety if something went wrong and the materials didn't arrive at the convention on time or in one piece. They stopped around two forty-nine AM to refuel, which required everyone to wake up and get off the bus at a random gas station taking around forty-five minutes. It will be difficult to secure chaperones for future trips or to get parents to agree to send their children if they think that they might be sent on school buses on such long trips. And I would like to acknowledge Chris's efforts in securing two appropriate vehicles for these kinds of trips. However, this board needs to be prepared if they're going to support these endeavors moving forward, that that's not going to suffice for Beta, um, as the high school, elementary, and middle school conventions run back to back and would require overlapping transportation. Thank you for your time.
Callie Bopper?
Good evening, Callie Bopper, being due to a busy bridge in Manor, Virginia. I just have a couple of things that I would like to say regarding the clear backpacks. Um, I understand and I listened to your plan, and I think that that's workable with your training and everything. I would just like to offer just a minor suggestion, if it's at all possible. Um, I have had multiple people email me, text me, and ask me if you've made decisions. Now, I've handled this in a unique way because you have not made a decision. Um, I ask, I listen to your, to what goes on in your meetings. I stand out there when you're having your discussion, you know. I listen to parents. I don't know what we find, I don't know what you're doing as far as the confirman that you get in. I know it's been a lot, just because I hear people talk. I have been telling parents to be a trans up because I know that there's a lot that they don't know. And I tell them, "You be the one. You be the one that tells your kid, 'Look, this is what I think we should do because I want to be, I want you to be safe.'" And maybe the next kid will want to be the safe kid. You know, starting, you know, you start the trend of this. Even though you don't want to be mandatory, you don't want to come in here and say, "Everybody has to do this," because I understand that you're voted on and you don't want your constituents to be mad. But you could say, "We encourage it. We would like to see it. We would like kids to have these." You could have a line for kids that have clear backpacks when they're getting in. That could be a fast one, kind of like the express lane. You could do whatever you need to do to encourage the kids to do this and take a lot of that work off of those people that are taking the backpacks. There are a lot of things you could do. All you have to do is think outside the box. So, I appreciate that you and Mr. Neal are on that safety committee. I'm not on that safety committee. But I have a daughter that teaches kindergarten, the same teacher that was shot over there. Are you going to be able to look at me if a kid gets a gun in and shoots my daughter? Are you going to look at me and say, "Well, yeah, we didn't want to take a chance and not get in the way then." We're sorry about your daughter, though. Are you going to look at me, Lisa? Are you, Glenn?
That's personal.
Yeah, no, seriously, I love you, Lisa, but thinking about it. Are you going to be able to look at me if Goldie gets shot? It's just something to think about.
These comments say that there can be personal attacks.
Okay.
And the remarks are also supposed to be, I don't know, one line in the column.
Because I talked to you on the phone and said the same thing, did it?
Okay, okay. The board, um... The board will now convene to close meeting. Is there a motion to, um, go into closing?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board convene closing meeting to discuss in terms of a scope of purchase of real estate as permitted under subsection eight point two nine of two point two dash thirty-seven eleven of the Code of Virginia, as well as nine personnel managers for discussion as permitted under subdivision eight point one of subsection two point two dash thirty-seven eleven of the Code of Virginia, consisting of the following. Twelve professional appointments, two classified appointments, two professional reservations, two classified retirements, one part-time reservation, one defined contract, twelve status changes, one substitute appointments, sixty-two coaches. Lastly, I move that we also, uh, convene that close meeting on the purpose of discussing the performance and salaries, excuse me. I move discussing actual litigation, legal counsel as permitted under subsection eight point seven, two point two dash thirty-seven eleven of the Code of Virginia, with respect to current employment litigation in Acu-Mac County Circuit Court.